All right, good evening. This is the Cottage Grove City Council meeting for April 6, 2022, which I'm calling to order. Our first order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before I ask the clerk to do the roll, I'll just mention to the general public here that Councilmember Dave Thede is remote this evening, and so I can see him on my screen here, and he's, yep, he's waving at us, but just want to let everybody know, so, and for the council, we'll try to remember for me, this, I'll say remember, to do roll call votes this evening on all of our different passes. So, next item is roll call, so, Joe.
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity that if anybody wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, it's welcome to do so at this time. We did have a sign up sheet on the entryway, but there was nobody that had signed up, so in case somebody walked in that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, it's welcome to raise their hand right now. All right, seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close open forum, and we'll move to number five, which is the adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. All right, next is presentations. We do have two presentations this evening. The first one is, well, we have two on this evening, we're going to flip them, because I don't see Shaletta in here yet, but she's supposedly almost here, and so we've got two. So we'll go to B first, which is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month proclamation, and so Councilmember, I've asked Councilmember Olson to read the proclamation for you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. As everybody is keenly aware, this is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month across the United States, and this is one of those things that strikes very close to home for my wife and I, as we have a now twenty-year-old son who's on the autism spectrum. Each year when Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month comes around, I'm always very grateful that the city council is willing to put forth this proclamation to help give people information about exactly what autism is. One of the things that I like to remind people is, is when you've met one person on the autism spectrum, you've met one person on the autism spectrum. The spectrum is very wide, and it's very deep, and there are a lot of different comorbidities that come along with autism, and there are a lot of different indicators of autism. So it's one of those things where every person that you meet who is diagnosed with what they call ASD or Autism Spectrum Disorder might have that disorder manifest in very different ways, and so the reason behind mentioning that is, you know, awareness is one thing, but acceptance is truly the most important part of this. And my family and I have been very lucky, very blessed, that we've had wonderful teachers, we've had wonderful therapists that our son has worked with, we have amazing family and friends, all of whom are very accepting of my son Corbin and his idiosyncrasies, and, you know, interestingly enough, before I came to the meeting tonight, I was sitting down with him and my wife, and we were talking about college for next year for him. He's currently enrolled in Next Step through the school district, so he's been taking some college courses, but he's technically still in public school, and it just really makes me shake my head to think that, you know, this young, young man who, at three years old, was diagnosed with autism, has done all the work and all the therapy, and has really buckled down with his studies, et cetera, and is going to be going to college next year. It's unbelievable. So, on that note, I'd like to, thank you. On that note, I'd like to read the proclamation, and thank you to my council colleagues for indulging me, a little bit of preamble there. Whereas autism or autism spectrum disorder, ASD, refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors, which we call stimming, speech and nonverbal communication, and whereas because autism is a spectrum disorder, each person with autism has a distinct sets, a set of strengths and challenges. The ways in which people with autism learn, think, and problem solve can range from highly skilled to severely challenged. Some people with ASD may require significant support in their daily lives, while others may need less support, and in some cases, live entirely independently. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control's Autism and Developmental Disabilities Monitoring Network notes one in fifty-four U.S. children has autism spectrum disorder, according to the Autism Society of Minnesota, the prevalence rate for autism in our state is one in forty-four, the third highest rate of eleven data collection sites throughout the country. And whereas parents, educators, therapists, and caregivers here in Cottage Grove continue to help people on the autism spectrum thrive, while simultaneously creating awareness and acceptance in our community through conversations, advocacy, and education. Whereas during the month of April, we strive to promote autism awareness, inclusion, and self-determination. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Cottage Grove, county of Washington, state of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of April, 2022, to be designated as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, and we will pass this, hopefully, this day, Wednesday, the sixth day of April, 2022, signed by Mayor Myron Bailey. So, thank you. And, and I'm going to do a shameless plug, because we have some people in the audience who I need to communicate with. First of all, one of the reasons my son and so many other young people in, in the state of Minnesota are successful and grow into productive adult human beings, even though they may be on the autism spectrum, is because of the incredible work of our public schools. When my son got diagnosed at age three, we were immediately plugged into South Washington County Schools and their school psychology program. His diagnosis created what's known as an IEP, or an Individualized Education Plan, which started to be implemented in pre preschool, so early childhood education. The work that was done by his speech therapists, his occupational therapists, et cetera, from the moment he was diagnosed at three years old up until now, is the reason why he is so successful. If you look at funding for our school districts across the state of Minnesota, and frankly across the country, more and more funding is required on an annualized basis for special needs kids because of what I mentioned in the proclamation, the prevalence of these diagnoses continues to grow, and the schools are asked to carry an incredibly heavy burden. They do it well, they do it professionally, they do it from the heart. Managing these IEPs is not easy, it takes a significant amount of time to write an IEP, you have to have several meetings throughout the year, those are required by law in order to ensure that parents and educators are on the same page, and none of that happens without proper funding for special needs. So, as we look at our school funding each year, make sure that you're looking at kids with special needs and whether or not those mandates that are now, in many cases federally mandated, are truly being funded appropriately. The worst thing in the world that you can ask any governmental agency to do is deal with an unfunded mandate, and I know my Senator Carla Bigum and my good friend Susan Kent in the audience know that all too well. So, I would ask that the legislature this year, who, who are currently dealing with a significant funding opportunity, I'll just put it that way, take a good hard look at our public schools, especially as it relates to special needs and other unfunded mandates, and do the right thing for these kids, because what's going to happen is those kids are then going to become independent adults who aren't going to need state services, they're not going to need federal services, they're going to be contributing members of society, which is what we all want, and frankly, that's the independence that they want. And on that note, I'm going to turn the microphone back over to the mayor, because we have another special guest in the audience who knows all too well about autism and autism spectrum disorder.
All right, so, yes, Council, or, Joe Fishback?
We need to vote.
We have to do a roll call.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do, but you, I need to do a motion a second, though.
Yep.
Yep.
So I'll move to approve.
There you go. Motion, motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Cambada. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. And thank you, Councilmember Olson, for giving your, your feedback and information on this very important month for awareness. Now we're moving to the other item on our presentations this evening, and that is Shaletta Brundage Day here in Cottage Grove, and so what I'd like to do is I'm going to first turn it over to Councilmember Steve Dennis, who is going to read the proclamation. Once he finishes the proclamation, while council is coming up to the front of the council dais here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you don't need to be sorry.
No, you are okay.
And we're going to get some pictures and all kinds of stuff.
Yep, and then we're going to have you come up, and you could bring, is it your son with you there? Yep, there you go. You can come up too, and then I know our, our two senators, I'll say for our area, are also going to come up here. All right, we're having some fun here now, tonight. So I'll start with the Councilmember Dennis.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor, and it truly is an honor for me to be able to read this, because I've had the privilege of getting to know the Brundage family, and they're fantastic people. So, this is a proclamation for Shaletta Brundage Day, and here we go. Whereas Shaletta Brundage is a Cottage Grove resident who works tirelessly to raise awareness about a variety of important issues that affect the community and people across Minnesota, and whereas Ms. Brundage has authored several children's books to offer a unique way to help educate people about autism, and whereas Ms. Brundage has worked with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety State Fire Marshal Division to raise awareness about carbon monoxide poisoning after five members of her family died, and worked with the Cottage Grove Fire Department to mail carbon monoxide alarms to Minnesota residents in need. And whereas during Black History Month, Ms. Brundage helped promote important Black History books and movies available at the Park Grove Library, and whereas Ms. Brundage was named USA Today's Woman of the Year from Minnesota for her work on behalf of families with children with special needs. Whereas the city strives to promote and harness the capacity of all members of our community, and is thankful for Ms. Brundage's efforts to raise awareness and educate people in Cottage Grove and across the country. Now therefore, the mayor and city council
[music]
of the city of Cottage Grove,
I'm sorry.
county of Washington, state of Minnesota hereby proclaim April 6, 2022, as Shaletta Brundage Day in the city of Cottage Grove. So, in, in, in addition to this, we also have a city coin that we're going to present to you, and on the back of the coin, here's what it says, awarded for exceptional service to the Cottage Grove community, and usually individuals who receive this coin embody the following: dedication, initiative, commitment, pride, and responsiveness. And Shaletta, you do all of those things, and I know one of the, one of the terms that you use, and you go out and you do so much more than what's just on this paper, and you talk about blessing a community. Well, tonight, it's our honor for the community to bless you with this thanks.
Oh.
All right, there we go. All right, so council, why don't you join me down in front? I know, Dave, you're going to be in spirit, and you, Shaletta, you come up, and then I actually could turn the mic over to Senate, Senator Carla Bigum, to do her guess.
We kept a good secret, girl.
You did. Oh, bless you.
So, so, one of the things that we talk about is lifting women up, but also lifting women of color up. And Shaletta, today, I brought my friend with me, Senator Kerry Dietzick from Minneapolis, Senator Susan Kent from Woodbury, that city of north of us, sorry, I said that on public. And, you know, we just appreciate you so much, Shaletta, for all you do for your advocacy, not for what's mentioned tonight, but you turn tragedy into hope and accomplishment and, and making a difference, and that's, that's the spirit that we need right now in America. You know, you and I, we talk about the, the platforms that women, there's a disparity. Women, women don't have a, a really strong platform, right, in equity with media, with sports, with radio, I mean, with writing books, and by the way, I got you, make sure to check out Shaletta's new book, Brandon Spots' Sign, coming out, I got you, coming to a bookstore near you. These are the types of opportunities we have to lift women up, but again, especially women of color. It is important that examples are out there in the community, that the community reflects, its leaders reflect its community, that's in business, that's in politics, that's in police, that is in teaching, so that we all have examples and role models. So Shaletta, I have a resolution here from the Senate, so I'm going to read it real quick. A Senate resolution congratulating Shaletta Brundage, Brundage for being named the Minnesota Woman of the Year by USA Today. Whereas USA Today announced the publication selection for Women of the Year, an award that recognizes an outstanding woman from each state, and whereas USA Today launched the Women of the Year Award in 2021 to honor exceptional women who work to make their communities better, and whereas, based on her outstanding contributions to her community, Shaletta Brundage of Cottage Grove was named the 2022 Minnesota Woman of the Year, and whereas Shaletta is a mother of four and the talented founder of the multimedia production company Shaletta Makes Me Laugh, where Shaletta works to advance Black creators and amplify Black voices throughout her podcast network, and whereas Shaletta is also the co-author of Cameron Goes to School, a true story about her daughter Cameron starting school as a child with autism, and Daniel Finds His Voice, the true story of her son Daniel, who was non-speaking and found his voice through music. And whereas Shaletta is a tireless community organizer and activist, she has advocated for legislation to fund autism training for police officers across Minnesota with our good friend Senator Kerry Dietzick here, helped create vaccine clinics to underserve communities, and recently partnered with First Alert to raise awareness about carbon monoxide poisoning, and send out more than one hundred free carbon monoxide detectors to those in need. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Senate of the state of Minnesota, that it commends Shaletta on the important contributions that she has made to her community, and congratulates her on being named Minnesota's Woman of the Year by USA Today.
[applause]
Give it to mine, let her see it.
There you go.
Oh, thank you. Oh, you can't give my plaque, girl, I just got this. Oh, okay, all right, okay, okay. I just wanted to say thank you, I can't do the work without, hey, that's my name, hey! I can't do the work that I do in the community without support and allies like you all. You know, if I have these carbon monoxide detectors, I can't put them all in the van and get them to the post office in the snowstorm. I'm from Texas, I don't drive in the snow, and so the police and the fire department come to the house, and they help me get these things to the post office, so that I can mail them to people in Morehead who need detectors but who can't afford them. I have three children, and at one point, they couldn't talk, right? And so we're afraid that if the police come to them and say stop, or, you know, give them a command, they don't understand it. So my son, Andrew, who's here, he was ten at the time, he went to Senator Kerry Dietzick's office, and the next thing you know, a few years later, she's got legislation to fund autism officer training. So, you know, I have these visions and things that I would like to do for my community, but it can't get done without Justin Olson and Steve Dennis and Carla and Susan and Kerry, and all of you who make it possible, who buy the books, who spread the word, who like the tweets, who forward the, the Facebook posts, who comment, who tell the friends, the teachers who read the books in the classroom, the police department who make sure that our family is safe if we're doing something like a vaccine clinic, or trying to make sure that families in need get what they want but can't afford. And so I just want to say thank you for being good community stewards, for hearing us, for Steve Dennis, for the liquor store that keeps me going. Praise the Lord for Dennis Brother Liquors, amen. But for being really good community activists alongside of me, I can't do it without you. I can't, I can't do the work. I can have a vision, I can have plans, but unless I could call Susan, Carla, Justin, or Steve, or Kerry, or any of you, or police chief, and say, hey, I need some help, hey, I need a ride, hey, I need you to come over here and, and help me spread the word about this, it doesn't happen. So, I, I just so appreciate this, being Shaletta Brundage Day, I thought you was calling me down here to pay some parking fines, something, but I really appreciate this honor, but really this day belongs to all of us, because as a community, we work together to make it better for our neighbors, and that's what it's all about. So thank you, and God bless all of y'all for doing, thank you.
And the fact that Carla could read that without crying, that is the miracle of the mission.
Maybe I stopped at Steve's liquor store.
Okay. Tighten up, tighten up. There. Andrew, you got one in there. You didn't have to work tonight, right? Okay.
I tried to work, you took a video.
The penny, more just in case. Add it.
There we go, there we go.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all right, that's a big difference. Yes, we got a little bit of paper. Very thankful. Thanks, Peggy. Some later. Thank you.
You can come here anytime.
I would love it.
Mayor, can I make a motion for that proclamation?
Yes. So we, so you have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Olson on the proclamation for Shaletta Brundage Day. All those in favor? I know, I know. Roll call.
Thanks, Peggy.
You can come here anytime.
I would like it.
Mayor, can I make a motion for that proclamation?
Yes. So we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Olson on the proclamation for Shaletta Brundage Day. All those in favor? I know, I know. Roll call. Yep.
Everybody vote yes? I don't know, somebody told me I would be fighting here. I want to just get in on the fight. Is that all of you, everybody, yes?
Yep.
There you go. All right, roll call, Joe.
Councilmember Cambada.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Thede.
Aye.
Councilmember Olson.
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Bailey.
And I'll just say ditto, yes. All right, great job, everybody, and thank you for allowing us to do these pretty amazing proclamations this evening. And as you can tell, very well-deserving. And it's interesting, too. I know we didn't have a proclamation on it this month or at this meeting, but this is also Volunteer Appreciation Month in April. And so, it's pretty awesome that we can do that with Shaletta and her family, too. All right. Next on our agenda is consent calendar. I do know since Councilmember Thede is online or remote this evening, he did want to pull D, E, F, and J. The three, D, E, and F, he just wants to comment because he's the liaison for the Strawberry Fest or part of the Strawberry Fest. And then D is a appointment. Is there any other items that council wants to pull this evening? Yes, Councilmember Cambada.
I'm going to pull item Q. I am property owner on that list of rentals up for approval.
Okay.
So I will be recusing myself from the vote on item Q.
All right, so what we'll do then, if... What we'll go... Yeah, we'll move that to a separate vote. That way, the council can vote on that without you being on that vote. Any other items? All right, so we'll go ahead and start. Councilmember Thede, if you wanted us to do D, E, and F together, you can talk, we're all listening.
All right. Okay, well, it's exciting, gang. We were getting all this Strawberry Fest stuff on the agenda again. And so, we've got bingo and raffle permits, and we've got liquor license for the Lions, St. Paul Park Newport Lions. And so, I just wanted to kind of get everybody all excited because Strawberry Fest is coming. And we're going to, you know, coming back to Strawberry Fest. So I appreciate your approval on those. And on J, we're actually for the liaison to the Historic Preservation Committee. And Verlin Lindeman is resigning. Kind of like retiring a little bit, I guess. But so, Tony Brinkman is actually... We interviewed him, and he's a resident for 27 years. He's actually on the Washington County Heritage Society, or South Washington County Heritage Society. And, you know, he just seemed like a great person to have on Historic Preservation. So I'd appreciate your approval on that also.
All right, sounds good. So that, thank you, by the way, for sharing about the great... And I'm sure we'll have some presentations coming up as we get closer and closer to Strawberry Fest. Lots of exciting things going to be happening and some new things this year, too. So with that, council, what I'd look for is a motion with the exception of Q, which we'll do for separate. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll second it, if you're okay with that, by Councilmember Thede.
That's fine.
Okay? And that's everything minus Q. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis.
Aye.
Councilmember Thede.
Aye.
Councilmember Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Bailey.
Aye. So now, we'll look for as...
I'll move Q.
Move Q by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada.
He recused.
Councilmember Dennis.
Aye.
Councilmember Thede.
Aye.
Councilmember Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Bailey.
Aye. So, all of the items on this evening's consent calendar have been approved. So if you are here for those items, they are good. Next is eight is approved dispersment. Eight A is to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dennis.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis.
Aye.
Councilmember Thede.
Aye.
Councilmember Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Bailey.
Aye. Next is nine is public hearings. There are none this evening. Ten is bid awards. We do have one bid award this evening, which is A is the Park Viewpoint Final Street Improvement Project. And our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfine, is going to walk us through this. Welcome, Ryan.
Meeting of the Mayor, members of the council. So last Thursday, we accepted bids for the Park Viewpoint Final Streets Project. This is a project in a development where, once 90% of the homes are completed, we put down the final wear course of asphalt and we replaced any curb or sidewalk that was damaged during construction. And for reference, Park Viewpoint, this is located on the north side of Military Road, just east of Jamaica Avenue. And this development was completed using State Statute 429. So it's an assessment-type development where the city actually does the construction of the streets and utilities and assesses it back to the lot. So that's why we took bids and will oversee the construction of this project. We did get six bids. We got good competitive bids where the low bid, apparent low from T.A. Schiffsky &amp; Sons, was under engineer's estimate of $225,000. So that was good to see. And with that, the recommendation is on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council has.
All right, council, any questions at all on this item? Councilmember Dennis.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As I like to do, and I know Councilmember Olson also likes to do this, he's got a smile on his face, we always just like to make the ask that our staff feels good about doing business with this company. They've got a good record of doing business with us and taking care of our community members, otherwise known as customers, right? So just want to double-check with you that we've got your stamp of approval on that.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dennis, T.A. Schiffsky's, they have done different projects over the years in Cottage Grove. And they're located in the East Metro. So even if it's not their project, they're a common supplier of asphalt as well. So their product is in a lot of projects in Cottage Grove and other East Metro cities. So very familiar and comfortable with their work.
Thank you, Ryan.
Fantastic. Any other questions, council? All right, I'll look for a motion to approve then. Motion's on the screen for all of us.
My motion to approve, adopt Resolution 2022-060, awarding the bid for the Park Viewpoint Final Streets Improvement Project to T.A. Schiffsky &amp; Sons, Inc., in the amount of $224,050.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis.
Aye.
Councilmember Thede.
Aye.
Councilmember Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Bailey.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Ryan. Now we'll move on to 11, which is our regular agenda. And we do have three items on our agenda this evening. The first item is A, which is the Cottage Grove Logistics Park, which is called North Point Development, as we've been talking about it for quite a while. And Emily Schmitz is going to take us through this. So Emily, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council. As you indicated, the next item before you is North Point Development. I know we've heard this name a lot over the last almost a year, I suppose I could say. So recap, the council did approve the master site plan for the Cottage Grove Logistics Park back in December of 2021. It is a 252-acre development, full buildout, about 3.4 million square feet of development space for warehouse, distribution, and light manufacturing. It is proposed to be a phased development, which brings us to this evening, but we'll get more into the details of that as we move forward. As a part of that master site plan process, the developer also proposed a preliminary plat. At that time, that preliminary plat proposed nine developable parcels as a part of the master site plan process. Since that time, the developer has purchased an additional 28 acres, which is on the east side of Ideal Avenue, just to the south of the future 105th Street that it will extend to the west and to the east. So that additional 28 acres is proposed to be included in that amended preliminary plat, which would include, of course, that future right-of-way for 105th Street as that development continues to move that way. It's also important to note that the developer will be required to propose an amended master site plan. You do not see that before you this evening as the developer is still working through what will work on that additional 28 acres. So that will come before you as a separate item. As you've heard me mention, as a part of this project, 105th Street will be constructed as part of this project. Therefore, the developer does need to purchase some additional property, which is currently owned by the Julines. So in order to keep those processes a little bit separate, the developer will be purchasing that right-of-way needed for 105th Street separately from their final plat process. Therefore, you see a lot split before you so that North Point can purchase that area needed for that right-of-way. And then they will be able to include that in their final plat. In addition to that lot split on the Julines for that right-of-way, the Julines will also be plating the remaining acreage of their parcel into two lots. Lot one will maintain the existing home and outbuildings. Lot two will be retained by the Julines for potential future development. So as I indicated, the Phase One final plat is proposed creating two developable parcels for Building One and Building Two, three outlots, one for future park, and then two for, of course, future development. And then, as I've mentioned, of course, the 105th Street right-of-way will be platted as a part of that first phase as well. So the Phase One site plan, as I mentioned, two buildings, Buildings One and Two. We took a look at the site plan, and we wanted to make sure that the proposed phase does align with that approved master site plan. So we take a look at the architecture, parking, and all of those details as a part of the review. So I'll just kind of do a high level through those, honing in, of course, on this first phase. So the parking, as you can see, they are proposing greater parking... A greater number of parking stalls than is required. The 562 with the 385 required mitigation and landscaping. They are proposing to plant the minimum required landscape. It's important to note that they are also proposing to plant additional trees above and beyond the minimum required landscaping, which will take care of some of their required mitigation on the site. Some of those trees that they are proposing to plant will be larger in size, which also helps to meet some of those mitigation needs on the site. It's also important to reiterate that the total amount of inches required to mitigate as a part of the master site plan will be planted on-site over the phased development. So we'll keep that tracked over each phase. And as we get to the buildout, if there are additional inches that have not been planted on-site, the developer will be required to pay that mitigation fee to cover that. Screening, noise, and lighting were certainly looked at in depth as a part of the master site planning process. Specifically, as we look at the first phase, the developer is proposing to construct the berm along 100th Street all the way to the second access on 100th Street. So that will really protect that first phase, the Building One and Building Two. In addition, the developer will be constructing a couple of segments of the noise wall that they have proposed that will go mostly along the west side and the south side. But of course, they're focusing their efforts as a part of Phase One by Building One and Two, as you can see on the south side of Building One and the west side of Building Two. I also want to point out a small segment of the sound wall that will be along 100th Street. For most of you that know, the XL Energy easement runs through north to south from 100th Street. XL does not permit for that grade to be increased underneath of those transmission lines. Therefore, the developer had to make some adjustments and kind of bring that berm down and instead install a segment of sound wall, which will be about 75 to 100 feet. So they're still providing that screening. But of course, they'll add the same landscaping as they will on those bermed areas. So things will certainly coordinate and blend together, providing, again, that required screening. The architecture, as you've seen, as a part of the master site plan for Phase One is proposed, just as they had proposed as a part of that process, with the tip-up panels, breaking that up with different textures as well as some glazing throughout those long stretches of building to, again, break up that image as you're looking in from the public right-of-way. As I had briefly mentioned before, the developer is proposing to dedicate Outlet A, which is about eight acres, for a future city park. This park will support future residential development in the area as well as create a very nice buffer between the industrial use and that future residential use as well. And finally, as you've heard us talk a lot about several public improvements required as a part of this project, as I mentioned, the construction of 105th Street and the roundabout there, some additional turn lanes on 100th Street, as well as improvements to Ideal Avenue. And then, of course, some additional future improvements. But again, we will monitor the traffic closely as each phase progresses to ensure that we're addressing any concerns that might arise as those phases develop. So with that, several recommendations before you this evening. Staff is available, as well as the developer, to help answer any questions we might be able to.
Sounds good. So thank you, by the way, Emily. I know we've seen a lot of this, but it was kind of nice to put it all in a package now, and a couple changes with sound walls and things. Council, is there any questions for Emily at this point before we maybe have the developer pop up here and introduce himself? Nothing, Dave? Good? Okay. All right.
I'm good.
All right, do you want to come on up? Just...
I'll be brief.
No, that's cool.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and members of the community. My name is Mark Mulitzer. I'm Regional Vice President with North Point Development. Just briefly, wanted to say thank you for all your support thus far on this very exciting development. And just wanted to restate, which my cohort had prior, that North Point stands by a commitment to be a good neighbor. We are not a merchant development, we are a long-term hold. So if there are any comments or questions or concerns that come out of the community, I'll gladly come back before the council and address any of those items.
Fantastic. And I do want to say, I appreciate the fact that you've done numerous neighborhood meetings, and the sound walls and all this kind of stuff has been 100% listened from the people that live in the area there, so. Perfect. Council, any questions for him?
Just wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cambada.
Just like to say again, as this development has progressed, it's clear that you guys are thinking long-term as a long-term neighbor and not just trying to throw something up and fill it and sell it. So, you know, from our perspective, we appreciate that at the city level, that we're bringing in somebody who's going to be, you know, an advocate for the community, bringing in additional business, as well as thinking about how what we're doing, what you're doing today is going to impact your neighbors. So I think staff has had nothing but good things to say about working with you guys so far. And we really appreciate your investment in the community.
Fantastic. And I would just, only because if I don't ask this, somebody will once I get off of this meeting tonight. I know that we're doing a groundbreaking, if everything goes through tonight, I think around May 26, I believe.
Correct.
Is the plan. When do you think you'll know who maybe some of the first tenants are going to be?
There has been already some interest in the park. However, typically, until you start pouring concrete for footings, those clients don't become, you know, committed to that. A lot of times, you face some hurdles in getting the property entitled right. So usually about that time, we believe we should potentially have a couple clients or tenants.
Fantastic.
But as of today, we are starting on a speculative basis with no one in mind.
Fantastic. All right. Any other questions, council? Oh, yeah, Councilmember Olson had a comment.
Thank you for being here this evening. We sure appreciate it. You know, we work with developers all the time, commercial developers, residential developers, et cetera. And one of the things that has stood out to me personally about North Point is your commitment, as you stated earlier, to being a good neighbor, but more so, your commitment to being a good community partner. And I want the public to know that even though you don't have any business on that site at this point in time, and that, you know, we're still working through all of the various processes and steps to get this, you know, completely done. North Point has already been very generous with the community. I know that you've contributed, you know, hard dollars towards community events, et cetera. And that really speaks to me in terms of the character of the organization. cetera, and that really speaks to me in terms of the character of the organization. And I can tell you, at least in my personal experience, working with developers for as long as we have, you know, there are various, I guess, degrees of that partnership, but I would put North Point right at the top of the list. You've been easy to work with. You've been very receptive to all the questions, concerns that have come your way, and more so, you've really dove into the deep end of the pool in terms of actually becoming a part of our community, not just somebody that does business here, but actually somebody who wants to support this community and its residents, and we're very grateful for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I'll be bringing one of those things up later this evening.
Yeah, I think you might.
Thank you. All right. So council, we do have five different motions, and each one will need to be done separately with a roll call vote. So who would like to take number one? Mr. Cambada.
I motion to adopt Resolution 2022-057 approving lot, a lot split creating one 60.40-acre parcel and one 10.61-acre parcel.
All right. So a motion by Councilmember Cambada, second by Councilmember Dennis. Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. Do you want to do number two, Councilmember Dennis?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. I'll, motion to adopt Resolution 2022-061 approving the Juline Acres final plat.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries on that one. Councilmember Thede, did you want to take number three? Are you okay to do that?
Well, I'm looking in the packet, so is that?
Do you want us to skip? I think it's the same, actually.
Okay. So I would move that we adopt a resolution approving the amended Cottage Grove Logistics Park preliminary and final plats? Or is that one Steve just did?
No.
And the Cottage Grove Logistics Park Phase One site plan?
Actually, it is the different one, isn't it? It's different in the packet.
Yeah.
No, that's right. Okay.
He's fine.
Go ahead, Dave. I'm sorry. Councilmember Thede?
Construction of approximately 700,000 square feet of warehouse, light manufacturing, distribution, and office space.
All right. So we have a, you're good there? You got that one? All right. We got a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. So now we're up to number, on our screen, once she puts back up, do you just want to read it off of yours?
I'll read it off the screen.
So once the screen can pop back up there, there we go. So we'll go to number four.
All right. Perfect. I will move to approve the Cottage Grove Logistics Park Development Agreement with NP BGO Cottage Grove Logistics Park LLC with modifications as approved by the city attorney.
All right. So a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. And last, number five, we'll maybe jump back to you, Mr. Cambada.
I will move to adopt Resolution 2022-059 approving the Cottage Grove Logistics Park Development Plan dated March 29, 2022, prepared by Kimberly Horn and Associates.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Olson. Final, any conversation or comments on this? Seeing none, final roll call vote on this one.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. So all of the motions carried. I look forward to the groundbreaking in May. Welcome to Cottage Grove.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next on our regular agenda is B, is the Fowl and Poultry Ordinance Amendment, and Cory, I said Fowl.
Fowl.
So Cory is going to take us through this, and Cory is our city attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. As you know, I don't come to the podium unless it's serious.
We know.
So tonight, we're going to talk about chickens and ducks first, and then we're going to talk about food trucks. No, it's actually kind of nice to talk about something fun for a change. So I'm excited to bring the new and improved chicken and duck ordinance to you. As you know, we have an existing ordinance from 2018. It's a, I like to start with ordinances as being conservative, but perhaps this one was a little too conservative because we had, we have zero licenses for chickens in town. So the old ordinance, or the current one, says it has to be a three to five-acre lot. You have to have 100% consent from all your adjacent property owners, which means everybody gets a veto power. You have to only have four chickens or ducks combined, 100-foot separation from any other residential property or dwelling, and 50 feet from the right-of-way, which for most lots is impossible, and a one-year license. So as I said, we have none. So perhaps it's time to go back to the drawing board, as the council suggested. And so we did, and we went to the experts that deal with backyard chickens and ducks, and we came up with a new ordinance for you. And so this is the one that we're proposing today, which we think is, protects the public health, safety, welfare, which I know is my biggest concern, and at the same time allows people to have this chicken and ducks in their backyard and experiment with having a little bit of wildlife, not wildlife, livestock, and be able to educate their children, educate themselves on how to just grow things from kind of the ground up, which is what a lot of people are doing nowadays, since you have to stay home more. It's more exciting to have things actually at home to take care of. So we're allowing it on all single-family residential lots, even up to whether a lot has more than one dwelling unit. It can have up to three dwelling units on it. We don't expect there to be a lot of people that have more than one dwelling unit per lot apply for these, and the reason that we don't is because most of them would be governed by a homeowners association. Most homeowners associations have regulations that would restrict you from having this kind of activity on your property. So we are requiring a certification that if you're in an HOA, that it does not violate any of those regulations. We are also now requiring an educational component. So everyone that wants to apply for a license must certify that they've taken an educational class from either the University of Minnesota or other institution of education that the city approves. We are allowing an additional, or two additional, Fowl, so you can have up to six chickens or ducks. We are requiring them to be in the backyard only and not adjacent to a street. So those on corner lots would not be able to have them in their backyard, but if you're not on a corner lot, you can have them in your rear yard 10 feet from any property line, as opposed to the 50-foot requirement that we previously required. And instead of a license, it's a two-year permit. So we're also reducing the permit fee, so it's only $100 for two years. We also have automatic termination provisions, so that if the permit runs with the person as opposed to the property. So if you sell, that permit terminates. If you stop having chickens for a period of 12 months, that permit terminates automatically. We also have, excuse me, performance regulations on the size of the chicken coop or duck Fowl coop and the run, the outdoor area. So we have some, we don't want people to just cover their entire backyard with a chicken coop and a run for the chickens. So there's maximum size limitations. It also, we have some other performance standards about making it safe and winterized for the animals, and that it must be made of durable material. We did keep some of the old restrictions, such as it has to be fully enclosed, because, surprise, chickens can escape, and so you do need to have a cover on them, and only one per property. You can't sell eggs, or you need to replace your chickens. You can't do that on your property. You can't slaughter them on your own property. You must keep it clean and sanitary. No roosters or drakes. We also have a provision that I don't have on the slide, but that you cannot be breeding, which if you don't have roosters or drakes, is not a problem. And it, we, the, it's an administrative permit that's issued by the city clerk, so the city clerk can also terminate that permit for violations administratively. So we have these, I feel like there's adequate protection to protect the community from nuisance kinds of chicken and duck habitat, but at the same time, allow people to have them in the community. So this is the recommendation that's before you. I think it's a, it's a good ordinance, and I, we would recommend it.
All right. So I will start for any questions for Cory. Councilmember Broson?
Thank you. You can feel the power when you step up there. So thank you so much for taking the time to go through that with us. And I also want to thank all of the members of the community who worked directly with city staff to formulate this ordinance. It, you know, it's one of those things that, like many things in government, people sometimes feel like, well, this is a no-brainer, we should just do it, and, you know, it's easy. But the challenge that we face up here is that we hear from everybody all the time, and for every pro, there's a con. And somebody once told me that, you know, situations such as these, many of the things we see that happen up at the state legislature, they're like a football game where you're moving the ball down the field every year until you eventually score a touchdown, and I think we're getting real close to pushing the ball over the goal line tonight. One thing I wanted to touch on is with the requirements around setbacks in people's yards, invariably, there will be questions about, well, what if this, or what if that? And of course, we know that when those things come up, there's a process for handling that. Could you explain a little bit to the public about what that process is?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Olson. And I've been thinking about this since we had our workshop, because I think the difference between this ordinance and other ordinances where we put regulations in place in the zoning code, and people can't comply because of configurations of their lot that make their circumstances unique, this is not in the zoning code. And because it's not in the zoning code, they can't apply for a variance. And so I know that we discussed that at the workshop, and since then, I've reflected on that and realized that that is not an option. People can always come to the council, however, and request an exception. And so that would be the process. Obviously, the council would have to consider kind of the same criteria that you would for a variance, and I would highly recommend that it be very unusual and unique circumstances. Otherwise, we should be changing the code. But that would have to be the process if people feel like their circumstances are unique and special and different than would apply to the normal public, that they could come to you and ask for an exception from the performance standards.
And I assume from working with you for all these years that one of the things you would recommend is that we apply that consistently.
Correct.
Okay. So there is a process for people to come before the council to discuss their particular circumstance, and, you know, we will then take that under advisement and, to the very best of our ability, apply our judgments consistently across, you know, the width and breadth of all the different properties and different yard configurations and everything that you come across in a city of 40,000 people. Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions from council at this point? The only thing I guess I'll mention for the public, and thank you, Cory, by the way, I know we've been working on this, and I know I'm looking at some of our friends out there that was working with our staff to get to this point. You know, should the council approve this this evening, I do want to let the public know that there is a flyer that is available at City Hall that lays out all the, kind of the groundwork, if you will, regarding keeping chickens and ducks in the urban area, if you will, of Cottage Grove. So if there's any questions, you can obviously go to our website, and I'll just, it's the cottagegrovemmin.gov, and then if you want more info on the chickens and ducks, you backslash chicken and ducks, and you'll be able to get that, or you can contact Joe at, here in the, at City Hall at 651-458-2878. The other one I wanted to mention real quick, because I think it's important, you know, we added the importance of education, and I know that the group is really big about that, and we heard that a lot from some of the other communities. So there are, it will be on our website, but there are four agencies, if you will, that you can go and be, take an education course in order to raise chickens and ducks. One, of course, is the University of Minnesota, which is the Extension Office, Shepherd's Farm here in Cottage Grove. You will be able to take classes there. I just talked to them this past Saturday for the grand opening. There's also one called Egg Plant Urban Farm Supply, and then, interestingly enough, Nicollet Ace Hardware. So that was the other one that was on there. So those are the ones that are, will be on our website that meet the qualifications that the state recommends for teaching and learning. And so I'm glad we're finally to this point where we can do this. And so I guess if council doesn't have any more questions or comments, we'll look for a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt ordinance 1054. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Dennis?
Just, just one simple comment, well, two, actually. Number one is we do, believe it or not, try to provide happiness to the community, and I hope this is a demonstrated act of that, because we care, and we know that you don't always make all the people happy with everything that you do. That's a given. So the one, the one ask that I would have of the community is, as, if this is passed here, that we please be kindly to one another and patient and respectful, because change is sometimes hard for people. I know the mayor has a saying, we're not going to say it up here, but it does impact people. So if we can all do our best, remember we're neighbors in the community together, so.
Fantastic. Oh, Councilmember Cambada?
I've had, over the course of the last six months, numerous passionate conversations about chickens and ducks. More so, I know more about chickens and ducks now than I thought I ever might. And, you know, I think, I think it's hard, like, these meetings are normally pretty boring, unless there's something on your docket that is really close to your heart. And, you know, I think from having those conversations, one, one thing that was communicated to me was that people don't think that anyone's listening. And I can say, especially with regard to this ordinance, staff and advocates were communicating for months to bring, to boil it down to something that could be both effective and fair to both sides, people who have no interest in, you know, having chickens and people who do. So, you know, but as Justin was saying, you know, in government and legislation, you know, it's really hard to reverse, to like, put it back in the bag once you've kind of let it out. So when we make incremental steps like this, it's, it's to ensure that we don't mess it up and then have to go back and try and remake it all over again. So I'm really happy with some of the changes that were made. I think they were measured responses to some of the, you know, hurdles that were getting in the way of anyone having these before. So I think, you know, I think Cory's done a great job. I think staff and the advocates have all done great work to, to kind of listen to the people who were really wanting this and find something that could work for them.
Great. Thank you. Now, Councilmember Olson, would you like to make your motion?
I don't know. You better check with Dave first.
Dave, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. So now, Mayor, I'm proud to move that we adopt ordinance 1054 regarding the keeping of Fowl and poultry and amending the city fee table to add the $100 permit fee.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. There you go.
We had, it was really nice to work with everybody, all of us, the ones you had at home, so I really appreciate it. It was a really good experience for us, so thank you.
Fantastic. And thanks for hanging on. I know it was longer than you wanted, but we knew we could get to something. We just had to take a little longer to get there.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You got it. All right. Now Cory is still going to be standing up here, because now we're moving to another item, which is the Mobile Food Unit Ordinance Amendment. So Cory?
Thank you, Your Honor. Similar to the chicken and ducks, we realized that we had an ordinance on the books, that we, again, felt that it was a conservative approach to introducing food trucks into the community in a measured manner to make, just kind of see how it fit, and our ordinance, again, turned out to be a little too restrictive, because we have zero licenses since 2018. Nobody's applied for one. So our current regulations are that they're only for private events, only allowed in[1778.41] residential and industrial zones with permission of the property owner, and must be 300 feet from any brick and mortar restaurant. And again, we've had no licenses issued. We have had some private residential events, one-time events, which we did allow an exception for, you don't have to get a license for that, but just have an inspection. And the fire department estimates there were about 10 a year, maybe, of those. So, the, again, we had this discussion with the council, and you felt like it was time to maybe expand it, give food trucks more of an opportunity to come, actually come into the community for more than just those little private catering events. And so, we are still allowing the private event only in residential zones because we don't want food trucks to just park in residential zones. But expanding in commercial, to the commercial zoning district as well as the industrial, it can be open to the public, still requires permission of the property owner. So, whether they're parked in the right of way or parked on the private property, they still require the permission of the property owner. But we removed the distance requirement from a brick and mortar restaurant. And because of that, again, the council felt that it was important to not let them just park in a spot forever. So, we're limiting them to 10 days a month, and then they need to move on to another spot. We reduced, after analyzing the fees, again, when we initially implemented the fees, we had done an analysis about how much we expected it to cost. We've reduced that because we've determined it doesn't quite cost as much, so we're reducing it from $350 to $250. We did remove the exception for the one-time catering event, so if somebody does want to have a catering event, they would still have to just apply for an annual license. But what that would do is allow that food truck business to operate throughout the year. It might be a one-time event, but as you know, grad parties, ooh, who used that food truck the last time? It's going to go to the next grad party the next week. So, they wouldn't have to reapply for another license or have another inspection. So, that is what we're recommending for your consideration tonight. It's an amendment to the current code, so it's not a complete repeal and replacement. We're just enhancing it a little bit to allow more opportunity.
All right. So, first of all, council, any questions on this particular item? I know one individual in the audience is very interested in this topic. Did you want to speak at all, or?
I guess.
If, if I could, I'll have you come up and just state your name and address for the record, if you would.
All right. My name is Matt Miller. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I own a food truck here in Cottage Grove called Northwood Smokehouse, a barbecue food truck here. And seeing the changes to the ordinance, to the amendments, does help allow food trucks coming to the city and providing another resource or option for the citizens of Cottage Grove to eat. It obviously helps my family because I'm a Cottage Grove resident, and their revenue generated from Cottage Grove will obviously help. It helps go towards some of my missions, which is giving back to the community in any which way I possibly can. And also, just being able to, you know, serve my barbecue here in town in a city that I've spent the majority of my life in, and I'm now raising my children in as well. So, I guess the biggest thing is upon approval and passage of the amendment, you know, it obviously means a lot to my family. And thank you, guys, for putting in the hard work and taking my phone calls, even though I can, can guess that, you know, you're looking and going, oh, man, he's calling again. But, but thank you, guys, though. No, I really do appreciate, you know, Justin, you know, for taking my phone calls and talking to me and setting me straight a couple of different times, too. You know, thanks, thanks a lot for that. And Steve, you know, taking the time out of your busy schedule, too, you know, at the liquor store and just, you know, talking things over and just having really good civil conversations. And Myron, as well, thank you very much, and Tony, too. All of this means a lot to me, and thank you, guys, for putting in the hard work and taking the chance and, and the opportunity to listen to me on something I'm obviously so very passionate about, as you guys all know. So, anyways, thanks again, and I appreciate it. Hopefully, the vote passes, so thanks.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Council, any questions? I'll look for a motion. We have it before us.
I motion to adopt ordinance 1055, amending city code Title III, Chapter 13, and amending the city fee table regarding mobile food units.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Again, I know when change happens, it can be challenging. I do want everybody to know in the community that, you know, we're trying to deliver happiness. We also want to see the brick and mortars that are here do well. So, my message and my request to the community would be this, please support the business opportunities that we have here that are working, that are supporting our community back in return. I think Matt has done a great job with his business. He has given back to a number of different important causes, which we appreciate that. And if he doesn't mind, as a fellow Creighton graduate, I would expect nothing less. So, I think it's a great thing, and again, we want to see everybody work well together and remember that we're all neighbors, people that invest here. We all have a common goal, and that is the betterment of our community. So, that's what I have.
All right. The only other thing I'll say before we, real quick, before we do roll call vote, is, you know, whether it's this issue or the fowl and poultry ordinance that we just passed, there's some other things that we have been working at, actually, for at least, I know staff longer than this, but the last month, on changing ordinances, not even just these two, these are two big ones that a lot of people have talked about. But what I also want to let you know is, and what really drove, other than having input from those within the community, like Matt sitting in the audience here, or the three individuals that were here earlier tonight, is last year, we did a community survey. And in that community survey, there was some key points that came out of that survey. And because of those key points coming out of that survey, we went back at all of our ordinances, and they're, like I said, these are the two main ones we hear a lot about, but there's other ones that we'll be getting to later as we're finalizing and then updating them that we'll share with the public, which I think will make the public more happy even with those changes that we're looking at doing as regarding some code enforcement issues and things like that. So, so I just wanted to mention that, that, you know, and I know you stated it pretty eloquently, Councilmember Dennis, you know, we do listen. Sometimes it's not everybody gets to hear, get the answer that they want, and sometimes it takes a little bit longer, but in this case, we're able to deliver what I think is going to be two amazing ordinances within our, within our community. So, with that, I will go ahead and look for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. There you go.
Thank you.
We have at least one clap in the audience, but that's because the audience is thinning out a little bit. Thank you, Matt. All right, next is 12, is council comments request, and I will start down with anything from Councilmember Cambada.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor Bailey. I would like to just reiterate, I know that I was feeling some concerned phone calls about our latest property tax statements. And here in this building, City Hall, in the training room tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00 PM is going to be an open book meeting with the county regarding property assessments. It'll be an opportunity for anybody who feels that their property was not accurately assessed to come in, learn more about that process, and ensure that their property was accurately valued, they're evaluated, sorry. There will also be one in the Washington County Government Center on April 20th, 2:00 to 7:00 PM. Oakdale City Hall, 5:00 to 7:00 PM on April 13th, and Woodbury City Hall, Thursday, April 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And if you go on the city website, you'll be able to find information about that as well as the county website.
Yeah, thank you for that. The one thing I'll just piggyback real quick on that, I don't, I don't, it was you that found it, but there was a, we, we actually found a, a video that I think Hennepin County did that really did a really good job of explaining property taxes and the process that the county and the assessors go through. And I do know that we're working, actually, with the Cable Commission to see about creating a video that's specific to Washington County. So, we are working with Washington County to get that out as quickly as we can to the public to understand what all these numbers might mean and, and what effect, if any, it will have on your particular home. So, thought I'd just throw that out there. All right. Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. We're going to talk a little bit about pancakes because the time has come again for the masons of Cottage Grove through Acacia Lodge Number 51 to host our annual pancake breakfast. This will be Saturday, April 16th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Prices are as follows, adults, $8, kids 12 to 4 or $5, 3 and under are free. The address is 11094 70th Street South, Cottage Grove, right out in Old Cottage Grove, Lamar Avenue, and 70th Street. And so, this is a great opportunity to come out and support some of the proceeds that are generated from this wonderful breakfast, which is all you can eat, is used to do a couple of things, help to run the lodge. Second to that is to provide some scholarship funds here for youth in the community. So, high school kids that maybe want to get a scholarship for college or something along those lines. So, it's, it's a very worthwhile event to support, and the masons, just like Lions Club and a bunch of the other civic groups, do a lot of things here to make a difference within the community. And one thing that's going to be new this year is, at 11:00 that morning, we're going to have an Easter egg hunt. We've never done that before. So, that'll be a fun thing to do. So, tickets are available at the door that morning, so we look forward to seeing many folks come out to support that worthwhile cause. And then, Mayor, I want to talk a little bit about the price of gasoline. Because, you know, we're, we're sitting in a unique position here, and I remember a couple of years ago, writing a, a piece that I put out several different areas on social media, dealing with the effects of, of why are we paying more for gasoline here in Cottage Grove? And this is something that is really disappointing to me. You know, I, I do support business here 100%, but man, I would love to see the investors that are here do something for our community. There is no reason in the world why we are paying 35 to 40 cents more a gallon here in Cottage Grove than what you can get in Hastings or other areas that are adjacent. So, I, I guess in bringing this up, you know, I'd love to have just a very brief dialogue here with my council colleagues on any thoughts that you might have relative to this because, you know, this, this is something that, that impacts our area substantially. You know, we work very hard here, support local, buy local, keep the money here, right? And, you know, we're sourcing gasoline from Marathon, four miles away. I mean, we shouldn't be paying that much more than everybody else. And so, there are apps that people can get on their phones that they can go and look and compare what the prices are here and adjacent. This is real, this is not speculative. So, it would be nice if, if we could put our minds together to think about what approach we could use as leaders in the city, whether we, you know, write a letter or, or do something, try to have some meetings with some of the folks that own these businesses, because it's just not the right thing to do. And I think people here are getting fleeced, and I don't feel good about it, and I know a whole lot of other community members don't feel good about it either. And I want to make very clear, the council does not regulate the price of gasoline, nor do we get any taxes off the gas, right? But we do work on behalf of our community members. So, I just bring that up for any discussion, if you guys want to have it.
Council, I mean, did anybody want to have any general discussion? I mean, I guess the only thing I can do is, it is frustrating. It's been frustrating for many, many years because, I mean, it's, it's showing itself more now because of what's going on in, in the world, if you will, and, and gas prices in general. And so, it's making it worse, the fact that our, as you said, and I can see it because I, part of my territory I cover, I drive through other communities, and I absolutely do not understand why, if I go up where my brother lives, up in northern Minnesota, it's 50 to 60 cents cheaper per gallon. And if I just go down the street or down the highway a little bit to Hastings, it's 30, maybe 40, could be less, but it's in that range. And we've had conversations in the past, but what I can do is, maybe, the administrator and I can kind of put our heads together and have some, maybe, some conversations because predominantly, the gas station, the, the ownerships in the community are really two, three if you count Hy-Vee in there, but it's really two is the, the main owners of the, of the gas stations. And I guess the only thing I would just ask the public, though, if you're getting gas, obviously, in Cottage Grove, please don't take it out on the managers and the associates that are in the stores. They're the, they're the ones that have to sell it for whatever they're being told to do. It's, it's the corporations that need to have the conversation. So, we'll, we'll look at maybe some opportunities to see what we can do to maybe reach out to them, and, and whether it's a meeting or a better understanding of why.
Yeah, and if we do a letter or something like that, I mean, I would certainly be happy to sign on to that and help contribute to the language in the letter as well.
Okay. Yeah, Councilmember Olson?
Having worked in the fuel business for about 10 years, I, I could spend a, a long time telling you why it is what it is. And in fact, I, I did a social media post a few weeks ago explaining some of that for people, but I want to remind everybody at the table here that this isn't the first time we've dealt with high gas prices nationally, nor is it the first time that we've had the conversation about various communities and, and their gas pricing philosophies. And if you recall, when we had State Representative Dan Shon in office, he submitted a bill that would limit the markup ability of gasoline in the communities he represented so that those communities, including ours, would be more in line with other communities across the metro. And that bill never got heard, it didn't get a lot of traction, it certainly made the front page of the newspaper a couple of times. But what I will tell you is, you know, fuel suppliers do not look at a community-by-community pricing strategy. They look at a national pricing strategy where they have to sell fuel for a lower price in point A, and they make up the margin in point B. And I'd be happy to have the conversation as a, as a council, I think would be certainly a good topic of conversation, potentially in a workshop, but I wouldn't hold your breath that you're going to get very far with it. So, and again, I, I was responsible for fleet gasoline sales for the entire country when I worked in that business. So, fuel pricing was something that I dealt with all day, every day. And it seems complicated, but it isn't, and there are some fundamental structural things that just are not going to change regardless of whether you like them or I like them or anybody else likes them. But the one thing that consumers can do is they can vote with their feet, which is what I always advise people to do. If you're unhappy with the price of something, the service that you've been given, et cetera, the one thing that you have control over is where the dollars go that are in your wallet. And if you want to support businesses that, you know, meet your expectations, then that's what you should do. But there's, there's a lot more to it, and it's a conversation I think we should have.
Anything, yeah, Mr. Cambada?
I don't have nearly as much experience in pricing gasoline as Councilmember Olson does. But I am curious to, I, I was aware that there are only a few players in town when it comes to ownership of, of those services, of those fuel stations. So, I'm, I'm curious if there's anything from a practical standpoint without impeding anyone's, you know, right to operate their, their business in a free market economy, if there are any practical steps that the city can do, whether it be having a conversation or, or getting to the bottom of why it is more expensive? Because we haven't even gotten a turnaround yet at Marathon, and when that happens, you know, when one of, one of the three refineries in the area goes down for six weeks, gas goes up every year anyway, you know? So, I mean, there are various external factors that affect the, the, the supply and demand aspect of delivering fuel to those stations. But I think, yeah, especially right now with, as quickly as things ratcheted up in, in price, I, I can see why people are being frustrated by it. And if at the very least, we could put our heads together, like you said, you know, ask around, figure out what the underlying motivators behind that pricing structure are so that we can better understand how to maybe, how to mitigate them in the future.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Councilmember? All right, Councilmember Thede?
Just that, that probably sounded like a broken record, and Strawberry Fest, we can always use more help at Strawberry Fest, and, and our next meeting is April 18th at 6:00 PM in Carboni's Back Room. So, come on by.
There you go. And definitely, and it looks like a lot, I've seen a lot of stuff on social media, sharing all the new things. Matter of fact, I've seen that you're going to have, I'll call it All-Star Wrestling on Saturday during the day. So, that's something new that they're doing this year, so I thought that was kind of interesting. Good, all right. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Joe. We're getting our money's worth from you tonight, so I appreciate that, all the roll call votes. If you guys get hungry before the Masonic Lodge has their pancake breakfast, which I will absolutely be at, this coming Sunday at the VFW, from 8:00 AM to noon, we have our Cottage Grove Lions Easter breakfast. There will be a Easter bunny on hand to chat with the children of all ages, so Dave, you're more than welcome to come. We also will have some delicious food. There will be- of juices and soda, et cetera, to drink, and we will also have biscuits and gravy, which were a huge hit for our Santa breakfast. And uh, this will be our, our first run at having mini donuts. As a club, we just acquired a mini donut machine here a few months ago. So we've been testing to make sure that we could figure out how to work the mini donut machine correctly, and um, we've had an awful lot of taste testing going on, which sadly I haven't been able to be much of a part of, but I know many of my fellow Lions have felt very comfortable with the recipe, and so we'll be unveiling that this Sunday, 8:00 to 12:00, at the Cottage Grove VFW. Hope to see as many families there as possible. It's going to be a whole lot of family fun, and as always, um, you know, you can uh, expect that you're going to get a, a great amount of service from our Lions Club and our friends at the VFW who take great care of us. So I hope to see you there.
Fantastic. All right, I have two items I just wanted to share with the public. One is, uh, you may have seen some postings out there, both from the city's standpoint as well as myself, and maybe some of the other council members, uh, linking on, and that is um, the uh, participating in the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. Um, there is a website where if you could go sign up and take the pledge, which is mywaterpledge.com. Uh, obviously identify yourself as a Cottage Grove resident. Uh, you have a chance to win some prizes for yourself for signing up to talk about uh, what opportunities there are for you to conserve and save water uh, within our community. Um, it takes maybe about a minute to fill it out, and they're going to ask you uh, who your favorite charity is. And the reason I want to bring that up is, they're going to be giving away a 2022 Toyota Highlander Hybrid uh, to some local charity uh, within uh, the area. So if we have, I know we've got a bunch of them, that I think if they had a, a brand-new car to use to bring things maybe around town, you know, food or, or other items, uh, that would be a great, uh, great benefit. So again, it's the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. We're trying to be number one, and so I'm looking for the citizens of Cottage Grove to take that pledge. You've done a great job in the past. Uh, not too many years in the past, we had some serious water challenges within our district, uh, due to, due to the PFC's issue, and this community rose to the occasion during that time and conserved uh, greatly. Uh, though we don't have that hanging over our head, let's do, uh, do what we can to uh, conserve water. Uh, second thing I wanted to share, and it's, it's interesting because Councilmember um, Thede was commenting about Strawberry Fest, but um, the other thing that we have coming up later this summer is the 4th of July fireworks. And the good news again is we will be having the 4th of July fireworks. Uh, and it's interesting, a little bit earlier, we were talking about gas prices, and as I think the general public is keenly aware, um, it seems like there's inflation going on uh, pretty rapidly around the country. The reason I bring that up is um, I then went out uh, to talk to some of the, and the different uh, uh, businesses in our community that uh, do business here in Cottage Grove, uh, either in our city or outside our city, but most of them in the city, um, and asked them if they'd, uh, the ones from last year, asked them if they'd be willing to donate again to this year's uh, 4th of July fireworks. My ultimate goal is because there probably is inflation, and I should mention, you know, my council member, uh, Olson is a Lions member, and the Cottage Grove Lions are the ones that are putting it on, but I really took up the challenge a few years ago, uh, to try to fundraise. And um, I can uh, share with you right now, I've been absolutely amazed uh, at what, uh, what we're getting. And so we already have firm commitments. Uh, you heard one of our businesses that are coming to town here earlier this evening, uh, North Point, who's building this large development in Cottage Grove, is donating $5,000 towards the fireworks. 3M has already responded back to me, they're committing $5,000 to the fireworks. Uh, Tennis Sanitation, Willie actually called me today and said, in the past, I'll be honest with you, I think they did around 2,500, he said, mark me down for 5,000. So that's another 5,000, so we're up to 15,000. And there's two other businesses in town that have told me that their work, they're going to donate, uh, and it would be in the 5,000 range. So I'm hoping by the second meeting in April to be able to share publicly all those businesses that are uh, donating, and we will have a total of $25,000 to put on an amazing fireworks display. Uh, and it's all because of our local businesses stepping forth to create an environment in our community, uh, where uh, friends and family can get together on the 4th of July. So uh, kudos uh, to North Point, 3M, and Tennis Sanitation right now, and then by the second meeting, I think in April, I'll have the other two main uh, don't, uh, companies that are donating. You probably, if you looked back to last year, you'll probably figure out who they are, and uh, they're, they're also committed, but I, I haven't seen it for certain yet, so I don't want to say anything until I know for sure. Uh, but I want to thank all of them for donating to this great cause within the city of Cottage Grove, and thanks to the Cottage Grove Lions uh, for putting on an amazing show. And if there is some inflation in there, obviously got an extra $5,000 buffer.
We also have a fireworks fund that still has a little money in it, so yeah, we should be in great shape.
So we're going to have a great show again here on this upcoming 4th of July. So thank you to all of our businesses to support this donation. Um, and that is it uh, for me. Um, the next item on our agenda this evening is a workshop, which is open to the public. Uh, we do have one this evening, it's Public Safety Use of Force Review. Uh, this is something that I believe that they did to the Public Safety-
Public Services-
Public Services Commission. They're actually going to share some information with us on the council, just on uh, use of force techniques and, and uh, policies or procedures. Uh, 14 is workshop closed to the public, there is none this evening, so we won't be adjourning in here. Uh, council, you'll be joining me back in the training room. So everybody have a great evening, and uh, we'll see you, I believe now, after Easter.
20th.
Yes, so we'll see you on the 20th. Happy Easter.